Yeah, I know.
Exactly.
May I have a roll call?
Goodrich? McCullough? Miller? Lewis?
Here.
Radzinski?
Here.
Figaroa?
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in the recital.
Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sam, please read our Fenton missions, beliefs, and Bison Way statements.
Absolutely. Fenton mission statement: Cultivates successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. The Fenton belief statement: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Karen, do we have any public comments tonight?
Yes, we do.
As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, with a limit this evening of 30 minutes total. As a reminder, please address staff members and students by title and not by name to protect their privacy.
Good evening. Just for the record, in case anybody doesn't know, we currently have two directors of Building and Grounds, so I will not be able to clarify them by name, so we'll just assume it's either one. All right, just to clarify, there is only one new board member here today. My name is Larry Anzalone, and I'm a groundsman here at Fenton High School and a resident of Benson for 33 years. I spoke last month at board meeting, and I expressed my concerns of the lack of communication between grounds personnel, director of Building and Grounds, and the athletic director and his office. Since last month's regional softball debacle, to no surprise, it has gotten worse, probably because it was not addressed by any administrator. The athletic director granted permission of an outside group to play baseball on our varsity baseball field for the month of June and July. I was given a schedule, and I was told I was responsible for setting up the fields for this outside group. The first game was scheduled on June 9 at 5:30 p.m. Three people spent two and a half hours setting up the field, only to have the game canceled at the last minute. On Tuesday, June 17, that game had been canceled for days, and I was not notified by the athletic director, and I had started setting up the baseball field. It was extremely hot conditions. At 12:08 p.m., I called the assistant coach, Al Salgado, and he didn't answer his phone, and I left a message and asked him if the game was still on and to give me a call ASAP to confirm. At that time, I had not chalked the baseball field. Al returned my call around 2:50 p.m. after I completed setting up the field, only to say that that game had been canceled, and he thought I knew and said he was sorry. So far, 50% of the scheduled games have been canceled with no notice or last-minute cancellation after the fields had been prepared. In addition, there was another game canceled after the field was groomed. Then, at the last minute, called at 2:45 by the head coach, saying he had found a substitute team to play, so we had to scramble and finish preparing the field before the end of our workday. I tried to express my concerns to the athletic director to discuss with him that I need to go through, and he refused to talk to me and said that I had to go through the director of Building and Grounds, which is like the chain of command. I find that reprehensible, that all these highly-paid administrators refuse to solve this problem that will be beneficial to all that are involved. There is no sense for me to set up a field, spend hours out there wasting taxpayers' dollars, and nobody's going to play on it. And all we need to do is communicate. And it's unfortunate that I have to come to the board and ask you, because the chain of command here does not want to address this problem. Because if we deny there's a problem, we simply don't have to address it, because there's no problem. I don't understand that. This is a communication thing. I'm not asking you for money. I'm not asking for any... I'm asking for communication. And it's unfortunate that I've got to come to the board, because the administrators here will not work with me. They don't say, "Larry, what can we do to solve this problem?" I can fix this problem, believe me. I founded Bensonville Youth Baseball here. I scheduled umpires. I ran everything, the program, equipment, everything. I know how to fix this problem. This is not difficult, if you really want to fix it. I don't know what I need to do here. It's unfortunate that I've got to come to the board, and I'm not sure if you guys are going to do anything either. But this is fixable. There's no reason that we should have this many cancellations, and on top of the fact that I'm setting up the fields. I came to you last month, and nobody's come to me to fix this problem. And when I go to the A.D., and he refuses to talk to me and tells me I have to go through the new... We have a new director of Building and Grounds. He's very green. He has no idea how to address these issues. He doesn't want to ruffle anybody's feathers. He's new, and to expect him to deal with this? And the other director of Building and Grounds hates my guts, and he's not going to do anything to help me. So you guys need to come up with me a solution, how I can fix this problem. We need a chain of command where we can fix this. I went to the Labor Management meeting that we have quarterly, and I was pushed back and shut down. That's not right. We need to fix... It's a communication problem. There's no reason for this. So I hope the board can help me solve this issue. I don't want to go another whole season with cancellations and not being notified, reschedules and not being notified. It's not fair. It's not fair to the kids. It's not fair to the school. It's not fair to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments?
No, we do not.
Thank you for your comments. Our next item is informational. Sam?
Before we get started here, can I ask, are we having a Wi-Fi? Is anybody else having trouble with the Wi-Fi?
Sam, you can resume informational items.
Okay. As Dr. McCullough's getting set up, just to preview the informational items we're going to have here tonight, we're going to talk about the superintendent's search process for '26-'27. We're going to create, with board approval, a superintendent's search committee. Then, we're going to go through the '25-'26 student handbook changes. There's actually a copy in your packet, a hard copy to follow along with that when Kate goes through that. We're also going to go through a tentative budget timeline and then FOIA updates, and then other... We actually have something under other tonight. So superintendent's search process for the '26-'27 school year. As we go to the next slide, please. Okay, so as we know, we've had some discussion on this topic before about bringing in a superintendent's search firm. What we decided to do here tonight is ask for the board to approve for the creation of what's called a special board committee. A special board committee basically meets for a specific purpose. In this case, to review the different search firms that we've identified, and then have a recommendation to the full board. And then that recommendation would be at the July 23, 2025, regular board meeting. To review, the three search organizations that we've identified is IASB, Illinois Association of School Boards, BWP, you could see there what that stands for there, and then HYA, Hazard Young, and Nattia. So the idea would be to take a look at the first two weeks of July, and then have these three organizations come in, have a committee meeting, which would actually meet in here. It would be like any other committee meeting as far as being open to the public and opportunity for public comments, for example. So again, it's a committee meeting, what's called a special board committee, and we would have that meeting here sometime in early July, open to the public. So that is the plan right now to present here tonight. And again, once this committee has a recommendation of the full board, it basically dissolves because its purpose has been served, assuming then it goes to the regular board, and then the board takes action on it. So with that being said, we did identify at the last meeting that the board president, Carrie Lewis, and Dr. McCullough were interested in being part of this process to sort of vet these organizations. And so now, what we're saying is we're at the actual committee meeting, and actually, Mike Miller was another one who's a board member who said that he was interested, but it depended on his schedule. So with that being said, I wanted to bring it to the board here tonight and hopefully talk through coming up with some tentative dates. Again, we're targeting those first two weeks of July. I have been in contact with these firms to have their basic schedules, and so, you know, I wanted to confirm that President Lewis and Dr. McCullough were still interested in being on the committee. Unfortunately, Mr. Miller couldn't be here tonight. He had something unexpected come up, but certainly he would... He could be on the committee, you know, and then see if it works with his schedule. So that's what we'd like to do here tonight. Right now, this is an informational item. Thought if there was any discussion, we could go over some potential dates with the members of the committee that we're proposing, and then we would take action later in the meeting to solidify this special board committee.
I'd like to...
Yeah, go ahead.
...that we look at the second week of July because of the July holiday.
Okay. The dates... The dates that seem to work were for the firms would be July 2 and July 8 was another day. So, sorry to... Yeah, if you could, Carrie and Dr. McCullough, if you could kind of look at your calendars real quick. These would be tentative dates, of course, but it would help if I could nail down a couple dates and then go back to the firms and confirm and sort of get ready for the process.
July 8 should be fine with me.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Same here.
Okay. So July...
Same here.
Okay, good. So July 8 looks like a good tentative date. Okay. So I will reach back out to them, assuming later on in this meeting we approve this committee. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Okay. Student handbook changes. We have Kate that's going to walk through these. And again, just to clarify, if you want to follow along, Kate is going to summarize these changes. The changes were shared with the board through the packet, but there's also a hard copy, if you'd like to look through them.
All right. So the most significant changes that we make to the handbook every year come out of our conduct committee. So our conduct committee meets annually. It is led by our dean of students, our deans of students, which our deans are here tonight. So we have Marvin Vargas and Carmen Abraham, so they led the conduct committee this year. So they lead the committee. It's made up of certified staff members who want to volunteer to be on it. We have student representatives, and we had two steady student representatives. We also invite parents to be a part of this. Parents did accept to be a part of the committee, but they were unable to make the meeting dates. But we're hoping in the future we can incorporate them more. So basically, every year, the conduct committee meets, looks over everything, has to... You know, they fine-tune, like, you know, when cell phones came around, making sure cell phones were covered in policy and things like that, if there's anything that needs to be updated. So this year, if you take a look, most of the changes that we're making have to do with just updated language. And what we really do is follow the model school handbook, which is put out by the Illinois Principals Association. That's kind of like the guide for all of this. Most of the changes in languages come around absences. There's been so much work done throughout the country, in our state, in our county recently, about school attendance and absences, and we want to make sure that in there that parents and students are very clear on what does truancy actually mean. So you'll see that we have in there, you know, what is an excused absence? So you can see those changes in there, and that all is just taken from the model handbook and up-to-date to make sure that everyone understands that. Misuse of electronics was updated to include some of the press policy, including sexting. So, you know, we make those updates. Maybe the biggest change, unique to Fenton, would be the academic dishonesty. So if you want to take a look at that, that's on page 48 on the top. And this is really a policy that we've had that's kind... It's been around for a long time, and it's outdated. This policy really used to have to do with, like, kids cheating on tests and using your crib sheet. But obviously, we know academic dishonesty with AI and, you know, cutting and pasting from the internet has really changed. And so we wanted a policy that was really going to walk kids through more of academic consequences, so that it would start with if a teacher notices that a kid is cheating on a test or has used AI or whatever. It starts with a conversation with the student and the parent. The division leader gets involved so that the student, we make sure that they understand where is the dishonesty taking place. If it continues to be gross, like, they continue to do it, right, then it would become a dean's issue, because that's insubordination at that point. But we really wanted to shift that away from it, going to the deans right away, and kids into more of a learning experience. So that's the change that we decided to make there, and that's coming from the conduct committee. And then finally, the other addition that we made to student appearance, you'll remember, was in a press policy having to do with, you know, just saying that we do not make any rules around students' hair. And that's something, again, from press policy, that that's not a part of the dress code. So a combination there, really, from the IPA, model handbook, press, and then, you know, a couple of things that are unique to Fenton, but no, overall, no huge changes.
Okay. So then, later in this meeting, we're going to ask for approval for the student handbook. We asked this clearly because this will go to print, and it's something that we want to update, so our parents and students can see it, and at the start of the year, they get a hard copy of an actual handbook. So... Any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, Bruce?
Okay. Just wanted to kind of provide an overview of the tentative budget timeline for '25-'26. I won't be here for it, but I'll preview it and hand it off to the new CSPO in July. At the July 23 meeting, the Board of Education approves the tentative budget to be placed on public display for a minimum of 30 days. I know you're familiar with this, but I'll just kind of run through it anyhow. And that'll be before the public hearing and adoption. It'll be published in the newspaper, as required, declaring that a public hearing will be held on the 24th, which is the regularly-scheduled board meeting. Am I doing this? Did I do that? Okay. Oops. Hang on. Okay. Knew that wasn't going to go so well. July... So on the 23rd, the tentative budget will be presented for discussion with the full board, and it will be, again, be placed on display for 30 days. The 24th is really where everything happens in terms of the board meeting, the hearing. The community will be allowed to comment on the budget, and subsequent to that hearing, the final budget will be presented for adoption, as required by the Illinois School Code. Just a couple of highlights right now. It's in very tentative form. That'll be continually developed between now and the tentative, and ultimately, the final budget. But revenues, I'll start with that, are tentative, as we said. The property tax levy in 2024 was 3.4%, excuse me, plus new property. So the CPI was, at that time, 3.4%. This year, we're in now. In 2025, next fall, when we file the levy, it'll be at 2.9% plus new property. So those are probably the biggest drivers happening there. The state of Illinois has not released payment information for the personal property replacement taxes, and you know, this year was... There was a dramatic decrease in those funds. Right now, we're... We have a placeholder in there to keep that flat at what it was this year, which is about $1.6 million. So it was up, down about $400,000 or $500,000, actually. I think the state actually made a mistake. Thank goodness, they didn't come back to try to recoup it, but it wasn't just us, but it was across the state that the... An overpayment made by the state, so. Federal sources of funding, the title grants are estimated, and the tentative budget does include the same amount as what we received this year, until more information becomes available on that. On the expenditure side, you know, many of these decisions have already been made by the board, the big drivers throughout the year. This year, starting in January, when the board gives us authority to start moving forward with the process developing the budget. The staffing plan was approved, for example, in March, the certified staffing plan. Salaries for all employee classifications are entered into the budget based on the collective bargaining agreements. If they're not part of a collective bargaining agreement, the increases have been approved by the board, and those have already been approved and are known and are input as those were approved at. Benefits are budgeted based on employee selections and enrollment. We just went through our open enrollment period. The plan year starts July 1st, so that's happening. We know what our increases are. We've already had that approved a couple of months ago as well. And then capital improvements are the big item that are happening, as you are well aware. The STEM work will continue this summer, and it's planned to be completed by the start of school, so very exciting about that. So whatever funds are left over will carry forward in the capital fund to next year to finish that remaining work. Other work, kind of semi-related with the STEM works, the small engines room renovation, that's underway and will happen this summer. That's part of the CTE auto lab area. Classroom renovations, the board approved that a couple of meetings ago. Those are for the vacated science rooms. That's well underway. We had some asbestos work done there as well. That was part of that project. And then lastly, the backflow preventer, which is going to be offset with the school maintenance grant. So those are some of the bigger projects happening this summer. That'll be included in the budget for next year.
Can you tell us more about the backflow preventer?
Yeah, that was identified in our life safety survey. So it's RPZ valve has to do with the backflow preventer. It's a safety measure. John's shaking his head. He probably knows all about these backflow preventers. But anyhow, it's scheduled to be input, so there isn't dirty water, I guess, backflowed into the water system, the clean water system. So that'll be worked on. Important project that'll be offset, as I said, with the school maintenance grant, and it's intended to be completed this summer, late this summer, that work will be done. All right.
Yeah, it stops bad, dirty water from flowing back into the good, clean water. All the water comes in at one point and then splits off, and this prevents... All the water into the school only comes in at one point. And then it... And this prevents it from going back into the pot of the water, the drinking water, and into the fire hydrant system. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. These have all been resolved this past month.
Could you repeat that? We couldn't hear you.
Yes, these FOIAs that are listed up here have all been resolved this past month.
Can we see the FOIA requests? Because it doesn't help much just seeing who the FOIAs are from. As a board, I think we would be entitled to being able to see what the requests were.
I'll leave it up to the board if that's something that you would like us to include, like, I don't...
I would like it.
I guess, at least, a short description of what type of information they were seeking.
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, this first one is pretty lengthy that was on there. So that one, you know, it would take quite some time to go through every single item that they're asking for.
Yeah, I think what he's asking for is to include it.
Oh, yeah.
So I think what we're saying is moving forward, when FOIAs come in...
Sure.
So I'm not opposed to it.
So you're saying we would include it in the packet itself, right? Not necessarily for presentation purposes, but just within the packet?
Both.
Okay.
But definitely in the packet at a minimum.
Yeah. Whatever the board... If that's where you guys are, that's fine.
No, Smart for Cure kind of speaks for itself, but other than that, I couldn't tell what anybody else was.
Okay. Sounds good. We can do that moving forward. Thank you. Thank you.
And then the current, the current requests, can those be added to the, to the meeting information so that we can have access to these three?
These ones right here, these three? I don't know how quickly we can get them to, I mean, but yes, I'll get you that information as soon as I can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
They could be asking information about me or something.
Okay. Normally, under other, we don't have anything. However, tonight we do. We would like to celebrate, look at these pictures over the years, Bruce.
Wait, just kidding. For instance, Bruce gets retired.
Well, this is it.
Well, we actually have his replacement in the audience, Doug Wild, so this is, this is really good, Reed. But anyway, I can't say enough about Bruce, the service he's provided to this district, his fiscal responsibility, his wealth of experience. You could talk to Bruce, not just on financial topics, but many school-related topics, and he provided keen insight. He has a rare combination of not just being a business person with a business background, but a great personality, approachable, and you're really going to be missed, Bruce, especially me personally. But we understand it's time, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors. But big shoes to fill here at Fenton, and I just wanted to thank him and with a small, little bit humorous acknowledgement here tonight. So, thank you, Bruce.
Well, thanks, Sam, and thanks to the board for all of your support. You know, it's been a great ride for me, nine years here, this ninth year, sort of, I guess. But, you know, it's great to go out under these conditions. I've had great opportunity to work with a ton of professionals here, and I feel very blessed and fortunate to go out like this. And, you know, what else can I say? It's been, it's been a great ride. It's time, you know, I'm, you know, ready to do other things. My wife's ready to have me home. I'm not quite sure if I'm ready to do all the tasks she's ready to have me do, but...
I'll let her know that you're officially retired.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, but anyhow, but thanks for the, I just, I wish I wore a tie tonight, geez, you know, with the, anyhow, I can't say enough, but very gracious and humbled to go out under, at Fenton. So from all of our fellow administrators and folks I work with over the years, the staff and the business office are tremendous, so, thanks.
Appreciate it. How about a round of applause for Bruce?
Our next item is consent agenda. May I have a motion that we have, that we approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'd like to have an item removed, please. The May 28 regular board meeting minutes, I'd like to have removed from the consent agenda, please.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the May regular board meeting minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Obstein.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion to re-approve the May regular board meeting, meeting minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay, I'd like to request that the, and I'm flying a little bit blind here, I apologize. I'm having a problem with Board Book. I'm not able to get into the files for some reason. So there's a section under those meeting minutes concerning personnel matters where we voted on a grouping of individuals to be reappointed and to be, some were new teachers. I can't remember the specific title of that item, and I can't see it, but it was, it was personnel matters. I request that the meeting minutes reflect that Dr. McCullough requested that the, or made a motion, requested a motion, or moved to divide the employment contracts. Yes, thank you. I believe it's the Personnel Report Motion Two. I'd like the minutes to reflect that I moved to have those contracts divided. It was not supported, but I'd like the minutes to reflect that that move was made.
Any comments from the board?
As he stated, I don't think there's any thing from my...
Okay, so that, that's fine, we can, so we can't really do that tonight, then. I'm flying a little blind here myself, to be honest with you.
Dr. Benson, it does reflect that.
It does state that?
It says, "Member McCullough requested that the board vote on each of the eight contracts individually, followed by a separate vote on the personnel file."
Perfect. Thank you. My error. I, I've had some problems with Board Book today. I don't know why, so I don't know if I may have been looking at a different file, but somewhere it didn't show that. Thank you, Karen. And these are the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. So, yeah, I'm good. I apologize.
No, no problem, but just to follow procedure, let's take, go through the, the roll call.
Roll call. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you for confirming that.
Go ahead with what you say about procedure. Let me say something about procedure.
Okay, now we're going to move on to these action items.
May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the creation of the Superintendent Search Committee, consisting of board members Miller, McCullough, and Lewis, to review the proposals of the Superintendent Search Firms and make a recommendation to the full board?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 2025, 2026 Student Handbook changes as presented? Some move?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do not believe that we should be voting in favor of the changes to the handbook tonight. Until there's an opportunity to do some outreach with families, community members around dress code or student appearance. The information related to the dress code and student appearance is really difficult to enforce in its current iteration. It's very abstract, and I think that there's a real opportunity here to work within our community, to be certain that our school reflects the desires of parents and community members, and in addition to that, provides an opportunity in which we can begin to garner new relationships with families after the history of events that have occurred here.
Roll call.
Yes.
I'd like to, okay, I get it, if no one else is going to discuss, I get an opportunity to, to reply, so I'd like to follow up with a comment if no one else has any comments to make. One portion of the student appearance language states that coaches and sponsors will ensure that the school dress code is followed. So if there's no interest in having any conversation about this, I have to ask you this question. Did that serve us well?
I have to add, procedurally and policy-wise and practice-wise, anything that's included in our packet that, in the board book, any issue or anything, or any kind of comment, if we had it, it would have come out between Friday and Tuesday.
Mr. Lewis?
Please let me, don't interrupt me. I've been kind to you since I've known you, and I've never interrupted you or been rude. That's the timeframe for us as board member to sit down with that over multiple days, to consider those. And then, if there are anything specific that we have an issue with, that we want to discuss further, every board member, at least, that's what I was shown when I became a board member here, and what I continue to practice, those things that we, I want to address further, I make sure to inform the superintendent of, and with enough time to address it at the board meeting that we have coming up. So if I don't respond with the thing in the board book, then I'm at the meeting ready to move forward to have, then my discussions or questions aren't something that's pulling out action items, that we've been given timeframes that they want to move on without any notice for them to prepare and with a plan to move forward with.
Mr. Lewis, I've been nothing but kind to you as well, so just so that the record shows that I've been kind and courteous to you as well. But I do have to share, that's incorrect. The reason that it's incorrect is because this is public business. This is business that we were elected to do on behalf of our community. The Open Meetings Act exists for a reason, and it's the very reason to prevent the kinds of things that you're describing, so that when we do our business and we have our conversations, it occurs on a public record. And that's what I'm doing, and I'm bringing to you board business during a board meeting, which is completely acceptable. This is the second time you've attempted to lecture me about doing my work as an elected board representative.
Let me, let me just jump in.
I am merely informing you of practices and procedures that's been put in, please don't interrupt me, please don't interrupt.
Mr. Lewis, I'm not interrupting you.
Please don't interrupt me. Let me at least speak, but if you can't let me speak, I defer to the superintendent.
Yeah, let me, well, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to answer the question. So I, I think it's important to highlight that we do have a Conduct Committee, that the deans, we have teachers who are in the building, obviously, every day. We went through these various topics. We also have students who sat in on this committee. We invited parents this year. Unfortunately, the ones that we invited didn't attend. So the, the process is there to get input. The reason why, the part about the dress code this year with the changes is because those are pretty much mandated changes to add. So what we do is we, just to show a little context, we share that category just so you can kind of see the rest of it. So I understand, as you see other parts of the handbook, that the Conduct Committee decided not to address or not to propose changes. I think, to me, that would be the answer for why we wouldn't necessarily like take certain sections that perhaps the board thinks we should take a closer look at and somehow survey or an outreach to the community. The other thing is there's, it's time-sensitive, since the handbook needs to be brought to, to print, basically. The changes need to be updated, especially the ones that are mandated, and we want that so our parents and students can see the handbook electronically, but then hopefully be on track to get a hard copy of the handbook moving forward. So my, my opinion, as someone that's been part of many Conduct Committees over the years, not here but elsewhere, is that perhaps moving forward, we could, if, if there's a desire to somehow have input from the board in this as the process moves, rather than looking at the changes, I think we could look at that, or perhaps try to do this in phases? I don't know. But I think there could be some room to look at the process itself, but I would not recommend doing that tonight, highlighting a section of the handbook that is, was chosen not to address, because quite honestly, there's a lot of areas in the handbook that weren't brought up for review here tonight, for whatever reason.
I, I do want to make one comment here. You know, we can add to, take away from this any way we want, and as someone who's taken advantage of opportunities to come to the school, when board members have been invited to different things, I will tell you, I have not been in this building when students have been present and not been uncomfortable. On every visit, I have seen issues related to dress that concern me deeply about hygiene, that concern me deeply about appropriate attire that covers one's body. And I think that that is something that does need to be a priority for this board to address.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have one question to kind of follow up on all of this, just for my own clarification. The parents were invited to take part in this. Did they take part in the meetings, but they couldn't be here tonight, or did they not be, or they couldn't make anything?
They weren't able to make meetings.
But they were invited, the offer was made, they chose not to come?
They, it didn't work with their schedules to come. But, you know, and the way that that, the committee works is they take a look at the handbook, the Conduct Committee, they read through the whole thing, and they bring forward anything, students, teachers, parents, anything that they see that's currently in there that they'd like to talk about.
I just, for my own, they, they were invited, okay, that was my only point of clarification for me. I'm good, I'm, I'm ready to vote if everybody's done discussing. As a matter of fact, I'm going to call a question.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Goodrich?
Obstein.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Gilbain Honor Change Order Number Four, Visitor's Concession Stand repairs in the amount of $75,843?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Reed, Reed asked, the, the building that used to be the Visitor's Concession Stand, they're going to put an overhead door in it, they're going to repair the roof, they're going to make it storage, and they're going to put electrical equipment in it to support everything else, and we're under budget and still coming out ahead. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Roll call.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Obstein.
Miller, uh, Lewis, I'm sorry.
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education, based on the bids received for the STEM Edition Bid Release Number Four, installation of pre-
bid release number four, installation of precast terrazzo stair treads and ceramic tile, recommend awarding a contract to Premier Tile and Stone in the amount of $67,883.23.
I'll make the motion.
Can we do a second, then I'll address Reed's question?
Second.
Okay. Reed, go ahead, Reed.
No, this is the guy's name, he brought it and finished it.
You got it, yep.
These are the replacements, but they've been inappropriate, complex property.
Roll call.
McCullough?
Abstain.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. May I have a motion that the Interactive Building Solutions Change Order in the amount of $74,093 as be approved as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
You got questions, Reed? You caught that tail end of that discussion during Facilities and Finance.
Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
McCullough?
Abstain.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the STEM Wing staffing as presented?
Any discussion?
Radzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Abstain.
McCullough?
Abstain.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves Part One of April 2025, Press Policy Updates as Presented for the Following Policies, Two-Dash-Two-Sixty, Two-Dash-Two-Sixty-Five, Four-Dash-Fifteen, Four-Dash-Eighty, Five-Dash-Ten, Five-Dash-Twenty, Five-Dash-Sixty, Five-Dash-One-Hundred, Seven-Dash-Ten, Seven-Dash-Twenty, Seven-Dash-One-Eighty, Seven-Dash-One-Eighty-Five, and Seven-Dash-One-Ninety.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who will be the nondiscriminate, nondiscrimination coordinator, the Title IX coordinator, Title IX coordinator, and the complaint managers for Policies Five Colon Twenty and Seven Colon Twenty? Those are blank. It's Five Colon Twenty and Seven Colon Twen, Seven Twenty.
I believe we have Dr. Coranda currently listed as the Title IX coordinator, and then the complaint managers are Dr. Coranda and Julia Bray.
So that will remain?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, so basically the same individuals will be listed that are currently listed.
Understood.
Yep.
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
McCullough?
No.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Resolution Approving Surety Bond of Treasury?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
McCullough?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed.
Does anyone have any committee reports?
The Bensonville Foundation will meet after next month's meeting in July, there's no major request pending, I'm aware of it this time. Some of the fundraising for that is the Music in the Park, some have been canceled due to weather, some are being rescheduled, that's really all we have for the foundation.
As far as the finance facilities, a lot of the items we've voted on already, but just to review, there was the, discussed the STEM Wing update, STEM Wing staffing, there was a Gilbain Change Order for the Visitor Concession Stand repair, another release for the terrazzo floor installation, there was also a BASS Change Order, Treasury Surety Bond, there was also an IGA between the City of Wooddale and Fenton for pertaining to the new land and the land cash funds. There's also a discussion on the 2024-25 budget, as well as the 2025-26 budget overview.
And just to add, that IGA discussion, which is an informational type item in the finance facilities, I would expect to bring that to the full board at the July board meeting, so you could review the IGA to be voted on. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Net sector wasn't meeting, it was very short, and I would consider uneventful. Len did not meet.
The Policy Committee met on May the 28th, and reviewed many of the policies, and requested breaking the policies up into smaller batches for us to review at the board meetings.
Thank you. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, July the 23rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM, with a tentative finance facility committee meeting at 6:00 PM prior to the regular schedule, to the regular board meeting.
Can I mention one other thing? Just keep this date open, tentatively, we're hoping to have the STEM Wing ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday, August the 14th, at 5:00 PM, of course, that's assuming we stay on schedule, but we're anticipating that day, so keep, circle that on your calendar, keep that in mind.
May I have a motion, and a second, to go into closed session for the following. Five Illinois CS 120 Slash Two C One, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton School District 100. Two. Five Illinois CS 120 Slash Two C Two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salaries, concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Three. Five Illinois CS 120 Slash Two C Eleven, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Just note that there would be no action items after closed session.
Do we have time for?
And a second to go back into open session.
Yes, one motion.
Second.
Reed, Jeff.
Roll call.
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Woodbridge?
Yes.
McAuliffe?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, we're back in open session. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.